Are we ready to do something? Meeting come to order. I don't even know the date. Somebody's motioning fingers out there that it is three.
March thirtieth.
March thirtieth.
Yes.
This is a special meeting, City Council, and we're gonna have our city manager do some presentation of some things going on. And ask her a bunch of questions.
Sounds wonderful.
So why don't you go ahead and do that?
Certainly. So when I came here, we started through the process when I was city manager. The prior council set out three goals for me as city manager to establish a homeless program for the city built on the work that had been begun in 2019. To update the city's overall comprehensive plan and to stabilize the city organization after coming through a tumultuous period. You have several of your new directors with us tonight. So in my experience, working through a comprehensive planning process, I always. I also use that as the opportunity to identify community priorities. So that we can get those set up to find funding to implement them either through the city budget process or through grant resources that are available. And so we started that process. Congressional spending, AKA earmarks, are not always the norm. They have been in the last couple of sessions and it's always based on the leadership. And so I maintain regular conversation with our representative staff. And they put out the information when those are available. And so in 2021, I had done several one-pagers based on priorities that had come through the public input process through the comp plan. And put those forward for consideration. And then those were maintained through the process. And so then the request came out again from Senator Murray's office. But actually, all three of our representatives, Cantwell and Newhouse, are taking requests for congressional spending. These were the five game changer projects that we've consistently put out there. And so as I was preparing this weekend to move those forward, and I put those out there for you. This council wanted the opportunity to look at these. We can put forward all holistically pieces of these. We can do all or none. That is your prerogative. But it is an opportunity. As you know, we went through a process with updating our comprehensive plan to update our capital facilities plan. So in state law, your capital facilities plan has to indicate that you have the revenues available to put facilities into place to support the growth. And we are upside down. So I'm feeling great pressure for us to find the funding to get these needs that have come through the process into place. So this handout that you have is a compilation specifically with regard to the question of the pieces of the transformational campus that we. You know, there was a concept put forward by prior staff with regard to the program for prior congressional requests. Council provided direction that you're interested in the sleep center relocation. And we are doing the feasibility study to look at locations for that. In the interim time period, council also authorized looking at what it would cost to build new for a police station since the cost to remodel came in fairly high. And so staff reviewed the possibility of combining some of these uses because. For example, our mayor came forward and had seen it done when the tour was taken in Walla Walla, seeing those uses together. And both of those needs are still needs that we have. And so in this document, it provides, you know, the question was asked where had all of this come up through? In addition, can we just move the units that are there? Or do we need to upgrade those? And so you've got some, the Washington Administrative Code that our staff has used in regards to the establishment of the sleep center under the emergency proclamation. I think that shows that we've got some flexibility there. And then you've got the comp plan vision, land use, housing goals. And the final piece is for our capital facilities plan. When you allow development to occur, or when you're conditioning it for development, you look at level of service standards. And so in there, you have the adopted level of service standards for fire and police. And also where we expect our police to grow during the upcoming planning period. And it's the addition of nine officers. And we know we were fairly tight with the remodel next door. And so there are also some dollars identified in the capital facilities plan for a police station renovation, police substation. And then we have some areas that are not served by fire. So it's in my nature, when there's opportunities to get funding, to try to put together a competitive package. And to try to take some things that we are doing and fit them into an opportunity for funding. So you have the game changer projects before you. Again, there were five. So we know we have huge needs with water and wastewater. And in particular, with the recent activity in the Wheeler corridor. We need wastewater capacity enhancements. Either through what is in our capital facilities plan is running a new line down to the dunes. But there could be some opportunities with a dedicated municipal-run wastewater plant on Wheeler. Two hundred and fifty thousand for design, four million estimate for phase one. Dave quickly put those together. And so we would have the support in the comp plan to do that. Senator Murray staffer said, request in the range of three to three million is probably what is something they could do. Total, yeah. The next item is the Broadway District revitalization. And so this came through the process. And again, when these were framed out, they were framed out as a total project that there are pieces that could could fit various grant programs. So whether it's, you know, a federal demonstration project for cool streets, which are repurposed streets coming into a city environment with new stormwater infrastructure. Much of the area along Broadway and downtown does not have infrastructure, so it's hurting our lake quality. We also have the issue in the Broadway District of the future acquisition of the land for the trail and repurposing it for rail trails. So that's all part of the Broadway District revitalization. There's significant open property there. And that is a roadway that when we reach twenty seven thousand in population, there will be a transition process started to turn that over to city maintenance and operation and now to the state highway system. It's in a place now where it needs some work. And so we think making a case for the transition of that in a better condition or having a plan for getting in a better condition would be a great application. The third one is the downtown creative district. In particular, downtown, we've got some great partner projects going there with the library, working on a plan to renovate and expand the building through their work, their partnership work. You've got the Chamber and the Downtown Association and their incubators they're working on. And we were looking at, through our parks comp plan enhancements at McCosh Park in St. Caius Square. The big project for downtown, again, is we have outdated infrastructure. And there are some pretty wonderful improvements we could make through a combined street renovation. Perhaps on Third with updated stormwater facilities. I don't know if any of you have ever gone to Park Drive in Kirkland. They use their stormwater utility because they had the need to put those facilities in place and then really upgraded the street along with that. And Third Street's getting dated at this point. And again, this all contributes to lake quality, which came through as a priority in our comp plan process.
Could I ask you a question on that one?
Yes.
On this construction mixed-use housing project to implement city housing action plan. You don't say who is constructing that. The city is not gonna do that.
So there, as we put our advisory council on housing together. One of the work items for them is to look at the housing action plan and to look at programs that the city could do to incentivize housing. As a city, we could acquire ground and we, or we have ground perhaps that we could make available for a mixed-use housing project. So there are many of those projects going on in cities throughout our state where the city has provided an impetus to get housing in certain areas.
No tax breaks, that kind of thing. Yeah, just the way I was reading it, it sounded like the city was gonna get into building these units. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, and I would also say, beyond that, just having the ability to even allow it. I mean, right now, a lot of the zoning and stuff recludes it from happening and/or doesn't encourage it, you know?
Right.
And so.
The new zoning that's coming through the comp plan certainly gives us that ability, providing that comes through the development regulation process. But we have the goals and policies in place. And you certainly have, I've heard from several private developers that there is interest in building mixed-use housing in downtown, several stories. So that would be good. The I-90 Improvement Project, this one was an issue when I came on board. We had council members who were already talking to our legislators about the needed improvements specifically with regard to the Love's Project coming in and the deficiencies at exit one seventy-six. So then obviously with our May Valley Study, where the need only becomes greater. We've added a lot of housing in May Valley. And so we have failing exits on one seventy-four and one seventy-six. And so that is a project that will take all of us working together to get, because again, that's a big-ticket project. And then the final one, this narrative is related to the transformational campus as it was envisioned and was taken through the process. And so when the comprehensive plan came through the process. Those, these game changer projects were specifically called out in there as implementation projects. Again, I'm one of those people. I don't like plans that sit on the shelf. I like the ability to, let's get things implemented so that our community knows that their input was heard and we're getting projects done. So all of that out there for your consideration. We can do zero. We will, we had letters of support from many entities last year. We would get those recirculated quickly for submittal next Tuesday. We have narrative ready to go that we would update.
So to be clear, I mean, or at least as clear as we can, so when I saw the email that was crafted, and just to try to bring us up to speed, what I was wondering all along was all five projects all have to have monies that, and what you're telling me is no. All five projects were like a package. And then I was worried about the strings that would be attached to where those monies go and how they're funded. And I think what you just told me is that doesn't have to be the case.
Right.
I know these grants and free monies, which by the way, I've never found any real free money ever. Always seem like they come with some sort of string or attachment. And that always has my concern. Even the simplest ones always seem like, well, we're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars to do this plan as long as it has these two items. And I guess that's one of my largest concerns is it always seems like government, and we're government too, everything comes with a carrot at the end. And I'm not sure what that is yet. I guess that's got me more, if we ask for this money and then we get this money, I mean, the comprehensive plan is a document that's this thick. And I feel like there's carrots in there that we don't know about. This grant, I'm assuming, is not gonna be simple. Or this game changer, or these funds. Am I not thinking this right? Is there not gonna be things attached to this?
So I can give you my past experience. The last time I was successful in getting an earmark for a project, and that was for the Pibus Market project. And so that was from Senator Cantwell's office. And so again, we had been through the process. In that particular case, the project that the community had wanted to support was a permanent location for the farmer's market. And so we had been through some significant planning and had identified a revitalization plan for South Wenatchee. In which we had identified that there, for the socioeconomic health of that neighborhood, there's a lack of fresh food available in a market setting in South Wenatchee. So we put in a request, a generic, these are pretty generic requests. You say where you think it may come from with the particular agency. And the list of agencies is, you know, two pages long. Because this is congressionally directed, our legislators will say, you know, where does this project fit? And then they're gonna come back to us and say, we think this is the program that will fit. And at that point, we can say, what are the strings with that particular program? For the Pibus Market, we got a one-point-four-million-dollar grant. It was a HUD Economic Development Initiative grant. And it was tied to making sure that the food bank had a location at Pibus Market. So that at the end of the day, when the farmer's market was over, they could distribute the leftover produce to the food banks in the area. That one-point-four-million dollars provided for all of the site improvements for Pibus Market. And got that, and essentially leveraged twelve million dollars because we were able to get a TIB grant for the street frontage improvements. And then it also leveraged putting a local financing district into place, which is a tax increment financing district that has leveraged seventeen million dollars in reinvestment in the district.
I have a question on your example there. Who, if you can identify this, who was the group that was the driver of that Pibus Market project in Wenatchee?
So the project was conceptualized by the city. And then when it came to implementation, a three-party agreement was put together with the Portisland County. A nonprofit that was formed specifically, an LLC nonprofit specifically to carry out the Pibus Market project, Pibus Market Foundation. And then the city was a partner. So there was a three-party development agreement.
Okay. And so during that planning process, I know that there are several private entities in that facility. Would you say that they were involved with the planning of that, or were they also pushing for this project to occur?
So the other piece of the, so to answer directly. Not initially because Pibus Market, the enclosed portion was conceptualized as an incubator market. And so there was a recruitment process that had to be done. So once the project was funded and able to be put together, it was really the Pibus Market Foundation that identified the mix that they wanted and went out after those initial businesses that occupied space.
I may have missed it, but I believe what I was looking for was what were the strings attached?
Oh, okay.
No, and I think that that's exactly kind of what I was getting at. It sounds like the string was to make more available food for low income.
There's usually strings from the people sending the money to you. You have to use it for certain reasons.
And so there's a regular reporting that has to occur that ensures that those uses are still occurring, that the farmer's market is there and that there is food distribution occurring.
On this transformational center, as I've, we talked before about, the last time we talked about this as the council. We really weren't excited about some of this. Matter of fact, we voted not to do the full transformational campus. I can see a community meeting space, a permanent building instead of the trailer they have over there now. I can see, as she fear has brought up, the concrete bathroom facilities and shower facilities that they don't rot away like the one we're doing. I can see some improvements. But if the sleeping huts, if I recall them, that we have now are still legally usable over there. Then I think what we discussed before was moving basically what we have in that regard over to the new location. And then going from there. And then looking at this, it's back to not only building all these small houses, but also building low-income housing.
So this was the prior narrative, which I, in effort because of time, I just pulled the prior narrative. So this has not been updated since.
If you send this to them, is this tying us to doing this in any way?
We would modify, we would modify, absolutely. This is.
Like, we could highly modify.
Absolutely. Yeah, it is. It is the language that came through that process.
But I'm just going with what the vote of the council was before, that we didn't go into all of this at that point that we.
I think what this, what the transformational campus concept represents is that when, and you are the new council, so you can set the tone. When we went through the process and had the housing needs assessment and the housing action plan. Our issue as a community is not just the sleep center. We need a variety of housing. And so the thought was, oh, well, here's five acres that the city has. Can you build in a variety of housing types at that location that would answer some of our needs at other levels?
The city building or someone else building?
You would, the idea was that you would develop the site and you would have pads available. There are entities like Catholic Family and others that they can use the site as leverage to obtain tax credits or grants to bring in.
The way I was reading this, this is the city doing all this. And yeah, okay. Ms. Martinez, you had a question?
Yes, or maybe a comment. Can you hear me? My voice isn't that great.
Can you hear you?
My understanding, as things continue to kind of change, is that the sleep center, which we know we have to move, and we're not gonna do away with the sleep center. Otherwise, we're gonna have more camps and tents to have to break down, only for them to pop up somewhere else like they already do now. Anyway, the sleep center would be co-located with the fire and police station that we all know need to happen. Those have been priorities for that, during our board retreat that we all talked about. We need more fire station. We need, we need to not spend money twice on a police station, on a remodel, and then a new one. We need to relocate the sleepless center. And we also need to figure out how to make more available through incentives or funding, like this earmark funding, for lower-cost housing. So I'm not sure what the debate is here, other than I know everybody is always concerned about the strings attached. But as has been answered in previous meetings, the strings attached are reports that need to be provided, which we will be doing. It sounds to me, based on, I think, a comment from Allison, is that we do have somebody in Senator Murray's camp that is supportive of some of this transformational campus language. And so if our priority is portable housing or lower-cost housing, I just see it as contradictory to not be supportive of these earmarked federal funds. So, I mean, we can't do it both ways. We can't say we.
I'd like to respond a little to that. We're not saying yet whether we're supportive or not, but the council in the past recently basically voted not to do this in this way. So I just wanted to bring it back before the council discuss it and see where they are now. I'm not saying that they should not do any of this. I'm saying that the council needs to decide what it wants to move forward with.
Well, I think, and I'll follow up, Dean, if you don't mind. I think that we're kind of getting the things mixed up. We have two objectives. One, the priority was to relocate that sleep center. We have to do that. The second, if it's possible, is some transformational housing, because we all know that we don't have enough lower more affordable housing. So I don't think that those two are integrated at this point right now. And I don't know that the federal dollars would make it, make those two integrated. Is, what are your thoughts on that, Allison?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
So we keep talking about the transformational housing and the sleep center, so they're two, the same thing. And my understanding is that we've kind of separated the two. One, because of the feasibility study regarding a transformational campus. But two, because the priority is relocating the sleep center. With the federal money that we might pursue for the transformational housing, those two things are separate issues, are they not?
They, they, I think I'm reading you correctly. So there is the sleep center in itself, and then the transitional housing or low-income housing, which are two separate things.
Yes.
If this narrative had identified integrating them in the same location, but they can be separated. I don't know that I'm. But there's a need for both. I think that was the other piece. The housing action plan identifies that we need housing at all income. In order to have a healthy market. And in fact, with the latest legislative changes, we're gonna have to report out on the production that we are able to do at each segment of the housing market.
Mr. Eck, you had something?
Deanna, are you finished?
I think Allison just kind of cleared up what I was trying to say. They can be two separate projects, and we need both.
So my question is, with all of this on the table, can you clarify for us, Dean, what our expectation is for this evening? What are we here for tonight?
We're here because, as I said just a minute ago, we, as a council, voted not to do this.
Talking about, I mean, all of these five projects, what is our expectation for this?
Oh, to give guidance on which ones you want to go forward with, if any, or if all. And on the transformational, I thought we should have a discussion on that because we voted not to do all of it before. So we need to.
I just wanted to clarify on what our expectation.
We need to clarify as a council what we want. We need, we need to clarify as a council what we want with, done with this. So I just didn't want to leave it out there without us having any input on it. We had had that vote.
At least three or four of us fully agree that moving the huts when we need to is our first goal. And then everything else is secondary at this point.
Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. To, to Deanna's comments, I think I understand what she's saying. But we do need to make sure we understand completely that basically what Allison presented, as she's explained now. Is that this was just the, the working document from last year. And absolutely that Dean is correct that the last meeting or a few meetings ago, we elected to do a feasibility study to look at it completely differently. So that's where we are. But what, what is, what is the Senator Murray's office's expectation of what our request will look like?
So that is for us to put forward. And so it, it's an application form. It is, is more than this. And I could, I should have provided for tonight examples from last year. So it's, it's about a three-page narrative form that mirrors the one-pagers that we sent out last year. And did we circulate the one-pagers to? Maybe, maybe not. Okay. The one-pagers that we presented last year. So it is a project goal, a project narrative, expected costs.
Okay, so, so let's say we presented it as we're going to move the warming center to an appropriate location. Or a more permanent location and have somewhat of the same style of campus there. Where you'd have huts or whatever, or, you know, bungalows next to each other that are permanent structures. With what Dean was talking about, you know, the prefab restrooms and all of that. If we submitted that and asked for funds for that project, what's the likelihood that we'd receive them?
I'll tell you, there is nothing certain with any of these requests.
Would it be more likely that we would receive money if we submitted the exact same thing we submitted last year?
In, in my mind. So in my mind, having a specific project with a finite, more finite. The, these were a compilation of projects and a large dollar amount. So having a finite project with a more finite cost, I think would, would be better.
Thank you.
Particularly because. Particularly because Senator Murray staffer identified that smaller dollar amount.
Mars, thanks.
I just comment and question. First off, I'm, I've always been in favor of grants. Anytime I can get either federal money or, or state money back to our community. Cause a lot of the time it ends up leaving and staying over on the west side or, you know, federal on the east coast. But if we can get it back, I'm all, I'm all for that, you know, obviously managing those strings. But on the different projects here, we have five different projects that we're looking at. If we submitted all of them, does that water it down? And should we focus, you know, prioritize them?
So it is, it is up to you. We can submit all of them because truly when you walk through them, there are, think about all the federal agencies. And so as I walked through them, you've got the clean water program. You've got federal transportation for Cool Streets. You've got HUD Housing and Urban Development for the, you know, for the, the sleep center application. So we can submit all of them because they're all, there are different agencies that we would identify in our application.
As long as you feel, yeah, they're strong enough, you know, I don't want to shotgun it and.
Right.
Miss the mark, you know? So if you think they're all feasible and could be achieved and.
Mr. Fancher.
So just doing a quick rough math here, we're talking to all these projects together, couple hundred million. And now we're looking for three or whatever we can get. So, I mean, it's hard, that, that's probably the hardest thing to get your head wrapped around. I mean, three million is not getting it done. I mean, yes, it's a nice, it may be a nice pile of money to start with something, but it doesn't do any of these in its entirety.
It, it is, it is phases of each of these.
Right.
Right. And so there's, there's pieces of all of these that you would.
And my, my comment back to Deanna, and, and I, I understand exactly what she's saying. I being from the housing sector and, and actually dealing with partners in trying to make housing more affordable. Including housing authority and vouchers from different entities that provide that. And, and we, we do our best here with the resources that we have. I think you could equate to making housing more affordable. Not just in the transfer, transformational centerpiece of this. You guys, it's all correlates to affordable housing when you talk about infrastructure needs. Road infrastructure needs, that money has to come from somewhere is the big thing. And I, I think asking for, for money and, and watching the strings. And yes, we're going to need grants and we've got them and they, they happen. We have to manage them and that's, that's a job of our staff and our council to make decisions on that. But I, I want to just be careful that it, that we don't have some flexibility with this money. That, that's my biggest concern that all of a sudden, I'm going through, and I, and I was on the chamber board when they were awarded the grant. Okay? For the incubator project. And once we got the award, and then with that award came a document that we had to play in the box. In the box, I'm not sure we can fit in it. To do an incubator project with the amount of money they gave us, with the amount of money the chamber had from the sale and, and some other resources. Because the structure has to be built a certain way. The lead requirements. And then at the end, you've, you've got additional money in it. It has to be pro- not profitable, at least has to pay for itself. And so that's my biggest concern here is, is, I mean, I, I've got a lot of history. I mean, you know, we have capital improvement monies that we collect that have unintended consequences. In, in the sense that we don't think far enough ahead. And I appreciate we're trying to get out there to think further ahead. Park fees, the, you know, the park fees that we have that all of a sudden, we can't use those park fees to maintain them. And, and same thing, these are all capital facilities. Some of which maybe don't take quite as much maintenance. Roads don't, they last a lot longer. So, so I just, my only concern, I think where we were all trying to get on this, I think, is trying to have some understanding. If we apply and say, here we go, here's our narrative. What, and just being sure that we have some flexibility. I mean, that we're not backed into a corner saying, here's your three million, but you can only use it for this. Because that money, we won't get used.
And I think, I think that's part of the discussion process you would go through from the representatives.
Right.
Say, here's the program we can fit you in. Does that, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Are you willing to jump through the hoops? And you don't have to accept it.
So in the case like of the DOT project, though, that, that, excuse me, the May Valley Corridor, I-90. That would ultimately be a DOT project, would it not?
I would assume so, yes.
So in that case, Mark, it's a little different animal. Right? Cause we're just helping to secure funding for what is a DOT project.
We're, we're trying to raise the profile of that one.
Yeah, sure. So, and that, and that was part of my questioning in, in the email as far as. You know, when is DOT going to step on board and, and tell us what they're, what they're going to do? So I know that that planning is in process. So I would be comfortable moving forward with that one today to that, that ask definitely. Because again, it's the DOT that's going to take care of it.
After, after looking over all of this personally, as far as I'm concerned, the only one I had any questions with was the Transformational Center. The rest of them, I'm fine with sending them forward.
Sure, Mark does give me pause though about the, the creative district, but.
Yeah.
I kind of like the arts and all of that stuff, so I'm, I'm torn.
I like it, I just, it's a big number again. And, and, but no different than, I mean, look at the number on the Broadway project. I mean, we just don't have, I mean, maybe I'm missing the, is there a vault of money somewhere? Daryl, did you not tell me there's a big vault somewhere of money?
So oftentimes, they want to, when you're writing these big grants, they want to know what the big picture is. And then you write it in such a way that you're piecing pieces of it together. You're cobbling together funds over a period of years, but you're kind of keeping the big picture in mind. The creative district one, for example, the stormwater facility. So I went out and I looked at that Park Place project in Kirkland and I said, you know, give me a cost estimate. That was 13 million. So I said, okay, same block, that project was a couple of years old. We're in Moses Lake, the cost might be less, so that's, that's probably a good.
No, I mean, that's fair. I don't question.
I guess the only other comment I have, because again, we'll use Wenatchee, because one, you're familiar with it. And I think I asked this before about the third crossing. And I asked how long that took. And there's a lot of, obviously Wenatchee didn't raise that money. They, they raised it through just like this process that we're working on right now with many partners, I assume. But you, you've told me it was like a 10-year.
At least 10 years. And you know, one of the things that would be really helpful for our region with these big transportation projects. Wenatchee's regional transportation organization is focused on Chalana Douglas Counties. And then through that effort, they've gotten focused on the urban area. Our regional transportation organization that passes through a lot of dollars is stretched from Kidditas County to Adams County. And so the, the ability to get them focused, it would really help us particularly when you have projects like the third crossing. That span different jurisdictions. So who brings everybody together? And in Wenatchee's case, they had the Chalana Douglas Council, Transportation Council. That they were able to kind of hone that project as a priority. And I don't know yet if that kind of prioritization process occurs with Quadco on it, you know? I've not been to a meeting. And I think Dave, you haven't been, because they, it, yeah. We have been a passive partner.
No one wants to take the lead with that second crossing. Quadco would be a very good lead organization. Access to, access to federal funds as well. Could be a key game changer.
I think a really good point here is that all of these projects, you, you read this and it sound like we want to do this right now. But all of these projects are long-term projects. And, and that's to reiterate again on the Transformational Center. The way the consensus of the council was before is move the huts, get it, get it working again in the new location. And then we can move forward. And as long as, if you want to send all this out, to me, I don't care, this is fine. But as, as we move forward, if a new project is going to be done, new change is going to be done. I want to make sure that the council has some say in that. Because right now, we want to just move what we have basically. Again, maybe the bathrooms, we can do those kind of things, fine. But, and, and then we can discuss in the future going on forward with some of this stuff. But this is not something that's all going to be jumped into right away. And, and that's, that's the way I'm, I'm looking at it. Now, if I'm wrong, let me know. Am I wrong?
What you're saying is, is be, before we take the next steps, that we're in, that we're sure that we have consensus from.
That's all I'm asking, yes. So. David, go ahead, sorry.
So back to the I-90 improvement with what's happening at the port, the phenomenal growth that's occurring out there. What's going to be happening east on Wheeler. I think our best bet is the I-90 improvement and, and all of that because of what's happening north of us and east of us. As far as a primary project, gentlemen, just a thought.
What's doing, sending one in doesn't mean you can't send all in.
Excuse me?
Doing one doesn't mean you can't do all.
I understand that, but if, if they, if they want a focal point. For us, that would be my focal point.
As well as the sewer and, I mean, they just go on and on.
I asked for this meeting for two reasons. This was the first reason. If, I'm waiting, if we are kind of done with this one, we can move on to the other reason.
Yeah, do we need to make a motion or?
You know, it might be a good thing. Do we need a motion to agree with sending this forward?
That would be great.
Could I suggest that we make a motion maybe for each separately? Just so we're absolutely crystal clear.
That sounds fine. Then, don't, don't lean back.
So I'll, I'll make a motion for David. I would make a motion that we move forward with making a request for the, the May Valley Corridor funding.
I'll second that, of course.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That part passes.
And then I'll also make a motion, number two, for the expansion of utilities to encourage economic development.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes. That leaves.
I would make a motion to. Go ahead and submit the, under a little different, different idea of, I'm not sure what the words are going to be on this. Not necessarily transformational center, but focusing on a sleep center.
It would really nice to come up with a different name for that.
Sleep Center Home Shelter.
Warmings and.
It sounds aspirational, but it's, it's.
Do we need to discuss that ticker thing with them, Allison?
No.
I don't think we need to pu- pu- put it on the podium at the moment or whatever.
Oh, so I, if we want to submit it, I'd like to have a consensus and a vote from the council.
So you're saying we need to submit something in order to continue funding for the next period? Is that what you're saying?
I would like to know if we have a consensus from the council to submit it as a project. We don't.
I saw Mark's. Motion.
So, so I'm going to re-stab at it. So I'll make a motion that, that we would, it wouldn't be the Transformational Center, but it, it would be the, to continue. We need funding to continue the moving of the sleep center to a new permanent location. And we need funds also for permanent infrastructure. And look at some permanent infrastructure first, you know, bathrooms, washrooms, that kind of stuff. So I would make that motion.
Very simple motion and I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one passes. Broadway District is still left.
Hello.
Sorry, Deanna, you had something, go ahead.
Yeah, this is really difficult. I guess I'm making a slightly different motion. I do want to include some sort of, whatever word you want to use it, transformational, transitional housing. Cause there's a big group of people, poor people. They're not just homeless. We've got those people to deal with. But we need to start looking for funding for this, these people that were trying to get out of homelessness. Where are they going to go next?
That wasn't taking out, taken out of the proposal. That, that is still part of it, it's just going to be done over time.
I believe this is still part of this particular federal earmark funding, isn't it, Allison?
Well, in the way that it was just described, the motion that just occurred, it would separate that out. And so what I'm hearing you saying is you'd like for the site to provide the infrastructure and location. That we could get a transitional housing project on as well.
Not necessarily that same site, so I don't, I don't know how this is going to work. Not necessarily that same site, so I don't, I don't know how this is gonna work.
Okay.
I think the focus, what, what we're, have been saying in different ways, is the focus needs to be on getting the sleep center moved and getting it set up without doing all the other right away. Now, that can be part of the plan down the road, yes, but, but we need to just get what we need set up, set up with the new location. And, and with the new, the new more permanent facilities that would go along with it. So I would like to go on the record, Deanna.
Sorry, hang on, hang on.
Okay.
Are we missing out on, um, some earmark funding now? If we don't have anything in there about transitional housing.
Yeah, unless one of our partner agencies was going after funding, um, perhaps if we don't request it, we're not in there for it.
I guess, go ahead.
It was a priority of the board to work on this type of housing for our families.
What board is that?
The Board Retreat, sorry.
So the council retreat had a long discussion about housing and making sure that we were advocating and putting a plan together for providing housing at all.
Sure, I, I think we're kind of mixing some concepts here, cause as far as I recall, a lot of that conversation had more to do with subsidized housing or, or, you know, apartments, things of that nature.
We were talking about tax breaks.
Right, exactly. That's, that's drastically different than what we're talking about right now.
I'm, I'm not necessarily talking about subsidized housing, Dustin. When you, when I say affordable housing or lower cost housing, you, uh, I think jump, jump to subsidized housing. Um, and that's not necessarily the case, but, um, as the comprehensive plan has identified, we, we have needs at all levels. So we need to pursue money to help be able to provide our community with what they can afford, what a family can afford, what they consider as affordable housing to them. So I, I think we're missing a, a group of people when we go from homeless to, you know, the developments that, uh, that are going around. There's a, a group of people, um, that really, nobody's kind of overlooking.
Ms. Madwell, you had something to say?
I do. I'm kinda curious. We, several council meetings ago, approved, I'll just, for lack of a better word, a voucher program where they had to meet criteria and the money was there for, um, food, clothing, first and last month rent, all that kind of stuff, those, those particular things. Why is, why is that not important or whatever? Now, if we have that in place already, and the people meet the criteria, is what they're gonna need to meet the criteria for what's being talked about. So if we already have that in place, why do we need to put more things in place?
I think, um, one of the concerns is that we have hotel vouchers, we have housing vouchers, and because of the vacancy rates, so the ability to place people continues to be really difficult because we're, we've got a gap in housing at that very affordable rate. Uh, and so that's what our housing needs assessment identified, is that we need to build in that area and cities can help incentivize that. I don't, if you wanna speak more specifically.
I was just going to say that right now, the hotel voucher and rapid housing programs like you're speaking of are grant funded. So we have ESG funding, which is good through September of this year. And then the additional funding that I believe you're speaking about that you approved about a month ago, that's good and through June of, uh, 2023. So none of these programs are long-term funded because right now, none of our homeless programs are part of the city budget. So that's why we're trying to think long-term. And, you know, with the Transformational Campus, we never, staff have never considered building it all at once. It's always been phased, and even now, you know, it is just conceptual because we wanna wait for the feasibility study. Like you said, right now, the priority is relocating the sleep center and what we have now. And then with, after the feasibility study, consider how we could possibly provide the other services that we already provide, such as transitional housing, like the emergency shelter or, you know, permanent supportive housing, if we wanna look into other programs or the affordable housing.
Yeah, can I go back to a comment that Allison made earlier that, I, I think I got this correct, that maybe there's a smaller pool of funds available and that if we, if we are more concise in our, our request, and I think maybe that means scaling the project down to something more manageable as far as the funds request is concerned, that maybe it's actually more attainable. So I think we need to move with caution, Deanna, as far as asking for too much all, I, I understand your request. And if the council wanted to vote on that as a completely separate request, that's okay. But is that, is that fair to say that we're not actually shooting ourselves in the foot by saying, we know that we need to move the sleep center and, and that's something that needs to happen now, so we're, we're gonna ask for those funds now? And we can go a long way to say, hey, our intention in the future is, you know, as the city grows and needs change, we'll, we'll revisit this. But is that, is that kind of a fair assessment of the situation?
I would say to that, I think when you're dealing with state and, and federal government, you ask for the moon and hope you get a meteorite. You, you, you don't ask for just the smallest you want, you ask for everything you can possibly get. And then go from there, am I?
That's the point I'm trying to make, is let's not just talk about, uh, relocating the sleep center. Let's talk about all of it and see what happens to stick. What can we come up with? Cause as Mark Fancher commented, this is all gonna cost us a lot of money. Where is it gonna come from? So, um, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we, if we submit something small. When we know, when we know what our bigger plans are, what our bigger needs are.
There's, there's been a light on here for a long time, and, uh, Don had something to say. Did you forget?
No, no, I didn't forget. Um, what I took from the council retreat when it come to this, um, the fifty in an affordable housing project was we did not want to get involved in a permanent housing unit of that stature. We want to incentivize it for private or nonprofit to do, but we don't wanna be in that business. And I think that's what.
Where the city's actually building it, but a way, so let me make sure, sure I'm clear, because all of a sudden, I, I thought about blending these, these two. So, um, underneath the, an application for our affordable housing needs, we could carve out the sleep center relocation and the infrastructure related to that. Uh, and then we could have an, an additional item that is, um, property acquisition for an affordable housing project. Because the thing that provides leverage for some of these affordable housing providers is if the city can provide the land, then they can come in and bring the project. So that would be a, a compromise. Those two things could be, um, identified.
Would someone like to modify their motion? Well, I don't wanna modify my motion. I'm not afraid of adding another line. I think the one stands alone, and I think it's something that is critical for us to move forward. I don't wanna ta, I don't wanna take that away from that. And I, and I will agree, I mean, cause I, again, what I do, we do deal with people that want to do affordable housing projects. And the, I mean, first question is, I mean, not even affordable housing projects, every project they do is, does the city have any funds to help us? Okay. And of course, in this state alone, it's very, very difficult. So if there is some creative ways to help affordable housing, I'm not against affordable housing. I, I wanna make sure I, I know how critical it is. It's so disheartening when somebody walks in and they tell you that, and they, we go get them pre-qualified and they say, I can qualify for a hundred thousand, show me a house. And, and, and it is disheartening, and it is hard to deal with it. So I, I, I don't want, and, and Deanna, I don't want you to understand, I, I am all for trying to figure it out. But I also, and I've, and I've made this very clear, I'm a little concerned about the city or any public agency being a developer. And, 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 and because that becomes non-affordable. Now, having a designated piece of property or a piece of property that maybe can be a benefit to somebody else doing the rest of the project, you have my ear, I'll just say, I mean, I, I, I'll be cautious, but on the same token, those are the things that we've never been able to help with any project. Is what, what can the city offer me? And, and it can be, we just passed some new legislature that we will have a little, another manual in our playbook, you know, or another something in our playbook. But I, I don't know how to make that motion and make it have meaning for wanting to do the affordable housing, but I would, I would very much say that, hey, if there's ways that we, and yes, we will need funds, if we're gonna buy a piece of property, we're gonna need some funds from somewhere. I mean, that's what I was making a joke, is there a safe here that I didn't know about that had a bunch of cash in it?
So one of the, um, within the downtown creative district.
Right.
That, that might be an option for an acquisition, uh, of a site where you could do, uh, a mixed use. And, and basically, the city would have the land and put out proposals for, we're looking for this type of a project. And if it's, you know, if it's part of a creative district, it could be live-work housing where you actually have, uh, and that could qualify.
So what are my concerns, just real quick, cause I went through it with a public-private project or public funds, that always creates its problems. Um, if the city owned something, I mean, now we runs back to the airpark idea. If the city owns something, can they, can they for sure get rid of all their quote-unquote development rights so that that person doesn't have to build under prevailing wage?
Well, the, the prevailing wage is also gonna go to their funding sources, so.
Right. And then, then all of a sudden, so we come back to how do we make it affordable? If, if we're involved.
But if it is through a development agreement, then yes, that can, that.
You see where I'm going. There's lots of pieces of affordable housing. If, if the fund source, and we discount everything, but the fund source said, you gotta build it to this standard, it doesn't work, is, is the problem.
Well, and I, I think you have some housing developers that are looking to do some projects here where they can bring in some other resources because we haven't taken advantage of a lot of those. So there's, there's tax credit financing, and certainly our housing action plan has identified the market. It hasn't necessarily been proven here, but there are resources that they can bring to bear. Some of the other entities that are doing mixes of those funding sources.
Right now, we have a motion in a second, okay? And then we're going on to something else. Let's go back and take care of that. Okay, and the motion was to, to ask for help in moving the, the homeless sleep center and the needed infrastructure, permanent infrastructure there for the meeting center, the bathrooms, uh, to run the thing. And that was, am I understanding the motion correctly? Okay, and I seconded that emotion, that motion. So I'd like to have a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion passes. Now, on the other, I'm not sure where we're going on this other one. Tackle the creative district. If there needs to be one more, that would be great. Let's do the creative district. Only because it's spelled out.
Hold on a second, please. Hold on a second, please. So let me finish up my part of this, cause I wanted to add a second motion. And that was to include funding for, um, other housing, just as we, Mark mentioned, or Don, or whomever is in the room of trying to, um, compromise here. I, I, I can't see us, uh, turning away an opportunity to seek funding. So I'm not sure how, what, what the motion needs to say, but I, I want to add that.
Could we add it into the downtown creative district like Allison suggested?
As a land acquisition piece for a future something.
Does that sound reasonable, Deanna? I, I'd like to take a stab at the motion, because I think I know where Deanna wants to be on this, I think. And I, and I'll try, and Deanna, correct me if I, if I don't encompass it. I'd like to make a motion to have a piece of the, I guess it's the proposal. Is it, it can be its own, just add a, a new item or whatever that would address the needs for affordable housing. Um, we would like to have funds available, uh, from the, where are these funds coming from? Earmark, um, that, that would be designated to allow the city to possibly purchase land to make available for a affordable housing project. Simple motion. Did I catch that right, Deanna, or?
I, I think, uh, you did, but I'm gonna ask Carrie and Allison, uh, David as well, if he has any thoughts on that. To, uh, to ask them if, uh, that sounds right.
Deanna, I'm not sure where we're going based on all of our other discussions over the last couple of years with Dean and I on this particular subject, cause we've already gone over it so many times and we've had a game plan. So we've all of a sudden brought something brand new to this without any real background at all.
I, I meant David Bren, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but I, but you still got my point. Dave's new to this, so he may not have any.
I don't know if he, he has any involvement, but I'm looking at the, everybody that's sitting there. And I know Carrie's involved in the housing, obviously Allison, our city manager. Does that motion sound right, that we, it will not, uh, prevent us or keep us from possibly, uh, uh, earning some funding here?
I did notice that underneath the downtown creative district, there is the fourth bullet down, construction of a mixed-use housing project to implement the city's housing action plan. This is actually integrated in there, uh, so that, that bullet could, you could basically add the sentence that, that Mark proposed to that bullet, and we would have it.
Excellent.
Great.
So do we, did we have a second on that motion?
I second. I second the motion if you didn't hear me.
That's what you said, that was your motion.
Oh, no, Mark motioned it.
And we, I don't want it to stand alone. If we're gonna wedge it into here with the creative district, we just wanna add my motion to, under the creative district bullet point for, uh, where it talks about the action plan and add that we wanna add the piece regarding gathering funding to allow the city to have the opportunity to possibly purchase land to be able to market to an affordable housing. What you're saying, uh, you wanna pass on the creative district portion of this? No, no, this is just, that's why I say, I would like to start over and add it to it. With that added to it? Yeah. I just, just add that to the creative district, okay? And I will second that motion. Now, we have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that is passed. Did we do the Broadway corridor?
Not yet. I'll make the motion to submit the Broadway District revitalization.
Please give me a second. Nobody seconds it.
I second it.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that one passes also.
Okay.
We'll be pulling out the, cause we have to submit them with three letters of support from supporting entities. So we'll pull those out and get those recirculated. And then, um, I have a conversation with Raquel Crowley, Senator Murray Stafford on Monday, and we'll dust up these narratives and get them submitted. They said Tuesday, but we may have a few more days. We might have a little bit of question there, I hope, so.
Okay, unfortunately, I, one other thing I wanna bring up. I would like the council's support on, this is about the airport.
I would like the council's support on, this is about the airport, unfortunately, to have the present airport board made into a management board for the airport under the council. And there is an aviation lawyer, uh, recommended by AOPA, which is a national organization, uh, House of Owners and Policy Association, and to, to, uh, get his services to help write up the agreement between the council and the airport board, to help write the lease, and to even get some input on the development. He's done air parks, he's done all of these things in the past. Uh, but for now, this first step would be to change the airport board from an advisory board to a management board to manage the airport, and bring in that lawyer to move forward.
So a procedural, um,
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a special meeting, so we listed this as an action item for the special meeting.
Oh, I thought you put this on there.
I, I did not realize we were taking action for this purpose. I thought it was, you can discuss it, but if you're gonna take action on.
We have to put all the-
Oh, yeah, that was misunderstanding.
So we do have, we do have it as an item on the twelfth, to bring all of that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we probably owe it to these two gentlemen sitting out in the audience to at least discuss it tonight. Is that okay?
Yeah.
No, but we can't make a motion on it tonight.
Not tonight.
Sure, but we could go so far as to discuss what way we might make a motion if we have that opportunity.
Uh, guys, we might make a motion to do this.
No, we can't, we cannot do that, Dustin, but we're all, at least most of us are in agreement that we need to have a change in the airport operation, and we'd like to make it official.
Yeah.
Then through that process, allow AOPA to, um, write a lease up and put that agreement, not the, not only the lease agreement, but the operation of the agreement in a formal setting. Yes.
Okay, and just, uh, clarification on, on, if that motion were to be made, is that something that procedurally we can? No, I know, I understand that, obviously, if it's put on the agenda and all of that. As far as changing the structure of the bo- the board, is that something that basically, once we make that motion, that is what's in place?
There's a couple of problems there. One problem is, I believe with the, uh, regulations on it, that there are two members of the airport board at the present time that would no longer be able to be on it and would have to be replaced by people who live within the city limits.
In the city.
They all know this. They all understand what's going on, and, and if we do that, they are agreeable to this, that, uh,
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking.
So I, I don't think there would be any pushback from anyone out there.
Could we have the lawyer present to?
Or next? No, I don't think we could do that by, by the next meeting. I, I don't, I don't know. We'd have to check on that.
Certainly from a, uh, a staff perspective, it would be good to have an understanding of who it is so that we can do a-
I can get the name and information, contact information.
And the background, and, and also to make sure that there's a history, to make sure that it's an appropriate organization that we can do. Um, you may want to have the evaluation first by this third party before you say this is the direction that we want to go with the organization of the board. It's not requir- it's not required. I would just recommend it so that you, you, you take a breath and take a step here for a second.
I've taken so many breaths on this, I'm about to pass out. It's- It's going to be, it's going to be expensive to get him, and I, I was going to set this up first and, and make sure we got this set up and then bring him in, is the way I was looking at it, but.
No, I get it.
Yeah. But I can get his information and, and we can contact him and see how that would go and what we can do.
That's, I mean, that's typical, that we have a letter of, um, and he would recognize that, that he would have a letter of proposal along with his resume for consideration.
We can do that. Anything else for the meeting today?
Oh, I was just, I brought copies. We're gonna start you through the process. We've been in union negotiations. And so we potentially could have our first agreement on the April twelfth agenda. Uh, and so-
Who might know whose that is?
So I brought copies of that for you, and then, uh, our intention is on the April twelfth meeting, if we could have a, a closed meeting where we can just review the financials of where we are with these agreements. Uh, but thought we would give you one to take a look at to get started. Um, I will tell you that negotiating, uh, labor agreements in this period of time with the city where it is, has been really hard. Um, but we have, I think, I think on all parts, uh, with all three groups, um, we're, we're making good headway. Fire has not necessarily started in earnest, but the first two, we're, we're doing well with. So we can give you all those details.
If everyone takes this home, and if you have trouble sleeping, read it and, you know. It will put you to sleep.
We, um, so I, I, walking back my steps about all three, we are almost through with, uh, police and ASME. Fire is initiating negotiations, so. Police. Kevin showed you fingers crossed.
They've, they've got it, and, uh, as soon as I can get them to have a meeting, I think we're, we're, I think, I'm hoping we're there.
Finish your turn.